Can everybody hear us? Right? Yeah, just just raise your hand if you can hear us. Yeah, okay, all right. We start our meeting with the pledge of allegiance. So I'll have
I pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everybody. Welcome to the January fourth, twenty twenty four, the first meeting of the county in attendance on Zoom. We have Chief Quanway, Captain Stacy, Sheriff Captain Mann, I see Jason Smith, I see Jason Henry. I think I got everybody Zoomed in, in-house, we're in the meeting. We've got Drew Gates, Leila. We need Chuck Nickerson. We have Commissioner Gaddu, Commissioner Foyle, Allison Kowalski, and myself in the meeting. So I think I got everybody. We'll go to the first motion.
I move to approve the December fourteenth public meeting minutes. We're starting with the consent agenda. The December twenty first, twenty twenty three, public and non-public meeting and the December twenty first public and non-public meeting minutes.
Second.
Motion debated seconded. Is there any additions, subtraction, any? Any additions in this? No? Right, motion. Commissioner Gaddu?
Yes.
Commissioner Foyle?
Yes.
I vote yes. Not a payroll.
I move to approve the payroll expense in the amount of one million, three hundred and seventy-two thousand, nine hundred and twenty-three dollars and forty-two cents for the period ending December thirtieth, twenty twenty-three.
Second.
Motion debated and seconded on the motion, Commissioner Foyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Gaddu?
Yes.
I vote yes. Okay, so now we're right to reports. Any additional updates that anyone would like to share?
Just congratulations to Superintendent Henry and the jail for getting our SAMSA certification. So we're good for twenty twenty-six. Woo-hoo. Good job.
Good job, Jason. Anything, Commissioner Gaddu?
Nope.
Yeah, and I just wanna, I just wanna say, as Commissioner did get an email, Jude sent me an email. I just, just reading it, I was exhausted. There's a lot of stuff going on in Jude's world. And what a way to stop the year, but I'll let her talk about it. She's still come on, but I just wanna, I just wanna say that that's amazing. The amount of work that you're doing. I know that we were choosing people and everything and some unexpected things come up. But good job. All right, now I'm gonna go to nonprofit organization offer grant application review. We had one group that came in. This was
Friends of
requested by Commissioner.
Yeah, I'm just for, yeah, it's Friends of New Hampshire Drug Court. Basically, they help you know, carry, help the participants of the drug court program. I think, you know, obviously, we have touched it in a number of places. I think this is one of those organizations that would be valuable to support because it ties into also some of the operating issues. I know we have, you know, liaison from the Department of Corrections or the County Attorney's Office, though they can probably speak to it, but and that, you know, from my own personal experience, seeing the impact of drug court, it is something I think would be valuable to support. It touches all three. We still have quite a bit of money in there. So I would suggest, I know they asked for, I think their request was for full twenty-five. I would, I think if we each, we've been doing it by jurisdiction. You know, by like district. So I would suggest if we each took eight from the, that will give them twenty-four and be clean and easy. I don't know how it would be.
Yeah, any other conversation? I'm sorry, did you get anything?
I'm, I'm in support of what they're doing, the activities. They have an impressive list of people that are also supporting them. So obviously, there's a long background of good people. I think their request seems high. Just in general, we have not weighed awards at this level. Personally, I think ten thousand dollars is a, is a good number. Because that's on the high end of what we've offered other groups. But I, I like everything that I read. I think that it's a group that we should support and I know it's a little bit marginal on the amount of COVID impact.
Yeah.
But it is just, technically, we can award the money. And I think this is one of those places that we should support because we can.
And just from a background on the financial end, and maybe the, you're right, maybe eight is too high, maybe we do five, 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 but there, when we organizations that hit countywide, there are a number of times, usually, we've given five or ten thousand dollars when it's in only one district. But there are a number of occasions where, when they touch all the entire countywide, we awarded more. I don't think you have necessarily been here for all, for those awards. So it is unprecedented, just from your, for a little
The only thing, I, I was actually thinking the same thing, ten, because we've been consistent around all of that. And the only other thing that I just kind of had a concern was that this is, this group's in, I guess, based out of Concord, which isn't really in Rockingham County, but I know that they use money for Rockingham County people. My question is, how do we, is there any ways we can put parameters on the fact that if we give them this money, they have to use it for Rockingham County?
I think it says specifically that in the application that it was only going to be used for Rockingham County Drug Court.
Okay.
Programming.
All right, so, so we have the ideal on there. And, and, and this has nothing to do, the job is great. I agree with everybody. It's just we've been consistent. This offer money we had mentioned earlier was really supposed to stay in Rockingham County. I know we had some outside groups also that I but I'm willing to, I'm willing to do the ten. And then, you know, see where it takes us, and then if we need to
Patter?
do more later, we can.
Do patter Jason want to weigh in at all? Do you think? Just because they're
Yeah, either one, anyone wanna chime in?
All right, well, I support Drug Court. I always have. I think they do a fabulous job. We do have a prosecutor that's assigned specifically to Drug Court. And, you know, I've seen they make a huge difference in many people's lives, including the defendants that we're prosecuting and their families and friends, and also our community, obviously, if, if we turn someone's life around. It makes them a more productive citizen for, for our community. So I, I fully support the program. I think they do a great job. I've been to many Drug Court graduations. I speak to our liaison, the person in my office, Aaron Drastelarius, who handles Drug Court. And they continue to just do a great job. So I a hundred percent support providing them with some financial support. It's, it's really up to you all how much you, you want to contribute. But I, I think it's a really great program, and I think it's worth donating the money to this program. It, it'll work and it pays off.
I'll chime in. We, we have a lieutenant, one of our lieutenants sits on the, on Drug Court every week as well, supports that group, making decisions. I will say that if you wanna look at it, say, pure financially wise, the, those that don't, that go through Drug Court don't come to us. The impact of financial wise, keeping them out of here is way higher than the fifteen thousand dollars that they've asked for. Our twenty-five thousand dollars they've asked for. Just FYI, called tax dollars across the board. But to Drug Court, I've seen many people, it's their last stop before they go to the state prison. They're our local residents. And we do have, you know, some success through there, which is great, because they become a productive part of society. And it not just affects them, it's their family that gets involved. It's a, it's a bigger group that all supports them. Court does a fantastic job with it. And over my years, seeing Drug Court in multiple counties, it is a, it's a really good program. And it does save taxpayers overall a lot of money by keeping them back out with their families and in the community.
I think we all are agreeing that where they cause, I think that was just a matter of what number they put on it. So I don't know.
I can support fifteen. I like Jason's argument that it's really saving county money because there are people that don't end up in his facility. I, I, I think that's
And then it's five from each.
Right.
And then if they, you know, if they have to come back later and said, hey, we're, here's how we use this.
Entertained once, you know, with some more money.
So, Commissioner Foyle, can you make that?
Um, yes, I make a motion to award fifteen thousand dollars to Friends of New Hampshire. I'm Friends of New Hampshire Drug Court, under category, under the ARPA Nonprofit Assistance Charity Category two point three.
Second motion debated and seconded. Any more discussion? If not on the motion, Commissioner Foyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Gaddu?
Yes.
I vote yes. All right, so now we, so number, bullet number two, we're, we're going over. So we're going to number three. So funding for a shower repair in the jail.
Discussion, so.
Yeah, discussion.
I sent a brief report to you yesterday.
Yeah.
It's, it's pretty serious. We didn't realize the condition of the drains until we actually got into the chase with a camera. We have a sewer camera that we looked at, and a lot of the drains are split right down the middle.
What is it, PDC or the?
No, it's cast.
Cast iron?
Yeah.
It's that old?
No, it's not that old.
Nineteen eighty.
Well, yeah, but I mean
It's forty some years old, yeah.
That's when I graduated. Next one.
Are you excited with care?
We will, yes.
Okay.
And I mean, forty years ago, they didn't have a lot of the corrosion control pH conditions that we maintain much more better in the water now. So it's gonna be fairly elaborate. There's four up and four down. We'll have to do two at a time, have it cut out. Have the drains pushed through, have the drains redone, covered, repour the cement, and then coat them with epoxy. Have to do that in four different phases.
Okay.
So I was able to get somebody to look at the concrete. The block is locked down, so the epoxy guy just kind of said, sight unseen, he gave me an estimate. I got a list of materials from the plumbers. Thank God we have the plum and the car guys helping us out right now. And so it comes to about thirty-one thousand, seven hundred dollars.
We can
Because you might remember, we had that failed tube bundle and the heat exchanger. We have money in the budget to have a company come in, drain all the glycol out of the system, filter it, put it back in, and so on and so forth. Well, when we lost the tube bundle, we lost the glycol. It kind of drained out involuntarily from our standpoint. So after we affected the repair, we recharge the system with glycol. There's a little bit more work that'll need to be done in the spring. But we have a balance of about sixty-eight thousand dollars in that glycol project now. So if it's all right with the board, I'd like to request to move thirty-one thousand seven from the glycol, which was a jail project
Yeah.
to the showers.
So just a quick question on the glycol, and I'm not an expert in big projects like that. I, I do have a little bit of background in bank-owned properties back in the day where we actually heated the homes. And we did usually put glycol in the systems. So I do know how that, the theory works.
Yes.
But do we put glycol in yearly, or do we, is it like a one-time?
It's a closed loop.
It's a closed loop?
Yeah.
Right.
So if something, if it leaks, we have to recharge it, and up to a certain point, you can get away with adding a few gallons of water.
Right.
But when you have a major leak, like we did with that, we lost all of the glycol, we lost all of the protection.
Right.
It was like plus thirty freeze protection, which is
Yeah.
nothing. And the rooftop units are, you know, the water's flowing, but even so, they're outside in the elements. We really need that glycol protection.
All right, next.
To just from a, just a mechanical or perceptive perspective, we move the money today, we make the motion, we make the money today.
Yep.
Then you will have to, are you gonna do, so the only thing it seems like you'll need to get a bid for is for the epoxy coating.
Correct.
And so that will come before us.
Absolutely, yeah.
Next week, or if you
However, we can get it to fall into place, yes.
You want us to do, you know, like, do an RFP for epoxy coating, too? Do we, you're gonna put the RFP out?
I may very well have to, yes.
Great.
Yep, that's the plan.
Okay, great. So for today
I'll just do a quick turnaround. I'll say, you know, get a quote by whatever. I've only got a couple of vendors that'll quote on it anyway, so.
Okay.
Yep.
So we will, and then maybe we can do an open and award.
Yes, please. That'd be great.
So for now, okay. And with that, I make a motion to approve the reallocation of thirty-one thousand, seven hundred dollars from the glycol replenish line to the jail showers project as recommended by the Director of of Building Maintenance, yeah, Engineering Maintenance, sorry.
Second.
Both voted made and seconded. Any more discussion? If not on the motion, Commissioner Gaddu?
Yes.
Commissioner Foyle?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes. And just with that, I just wanna bring up, we go to the next one. I, I do talk with, we had brought this up with Chuck a while ago. We wanna take a look at the breakdown offer. The dollars that we spent and everything, I think that may be, maybe towards the end of the month. Because I did talk to Jude as well. There's been a few unexpected things that have happened that, that are costing extra money that we may wanna move to allocate, and they're one-time things that make sense if we I mean, as, as an auction, we could use some offer money to fix up one thing.
Especially because I think we do have extra in some of the lines for COVID. There are some COVID lines from, like, from the County Attorney's Office, as well as for testing and things like that, that we don't have because we have other source funding. So
Exactly.
there's a little bit, there's
Yeah, because we, sorry, we, we had gotten some of the extra surprise monies after the fact from the state for like testing grants that we weren't expecting that actually caused a problem because then I had to scramble because we were trying to use that CARES Act infection prevention monies.
Right.
And so that had, the monies I was using for testing, that had to be reallocated to the testing grants from the state. And so, yes, it meant that'd be, I think, half a million.
Right.
Because testing gets pretty expensive if you have quite a lot going on.
Right.
Half a million there probably won't really have to be used, you know, possibly at all, very little, so we definitely reallocate. Since I already have to this month do that quarterly filing for order descended, I'll do an updated, you know, analysis of where things are.
Yeah.
Plus, like I said, with that filing, too, we get our final ultimate total amount we're gonna know for loss revenue.
Fantastic.
And now causing reallocation as well.
Right.
Yeah.
Just from that.
We can have some heavy discussion as to whether we probably wanna
Also, we have more liberal application in the loss revenue category. So that will, in terms of what we put towards different specific elements of the building, we have a little more leeway in that.
Yeah, so some of it, that's currently, for example, is in one point four, which is COVID prevention in dense work sites, stuff like that. So that's our rationale for doing some of the improvements with the registry deeds, especially County Attorney's, dispatch center for the Sheriff's Office, things like that, moving the auditorium
Right.
out from here, you know, as far as the public meeting place, lots of that, especially the labor components and things like that, and some of the materials that would go to the loss revenue section instead.
Right.
Because, because Davis Bacon won't apply.
Do you think we're timed, for a timeline on discussion on this? The end of
End of this month, yeah, end of this, end of this month or the first meeting in, in February.
I think we should just target the first week in February, because that gives you a little time to, like, because all the filings are gonna be due towards the end of the month, so we can do a little, little hair breathing, just a hair.
Very good. So let's move on to number four, exception request.
I move to approve an exception request to personnel policy seven dash four for a Department of Corrections employee, KA, as recommended by the Superintendent and Senior Director of Human Resources.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, but not on the motion, Commissioner Foyle?
Yes, are we?
Oh, I'm, I'm, any discussion? Is there any discussion?
My only discussion point is this is consistent with what we've done historically. My question is, is, is it enough? It falls in line with my God.
Okay.
Further discussion? Not on motion, Commissioner Foyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Gaddu?
Yes.
I vote yes. Next one. Exception request seven three?
I move to approve and accept a request to personnel policy seven dash three, new appointment rate for a facilities operation employee, RZ, as recommended by the Senior Director of Human Resources.
Second motion debated and seconded. Any discussion on this one?
Just that we had a number of, it sounds like really well-qualified applicants. This applicant seems like he has a ton of of experience and hopefully it'll work out, be a great fit for succession planning for us.
Looks like a very good fit from what I saw with his background.
Now, on the motion, Commissioner?
And thank you, Jude, and to, and Allison, and the team for
Jason.
Jason, it's good. For your interview team and our everybody's efforts.
On the motion, Commissioner Gaddu?
Yes.
Yes.
Long-term care services.
I move to reject the proposal received for the ice maker and water dispenser, RFP, unauthorized republishing at a later date as recommended by the Senior Director of Long-Term Care Services.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? If not on motion, Commissioner Gaddu?
Yes.
Commissioner Foyle?
Yes.
I vote yes.
Hospital?
Elliot Hospital.
I move to approve the Elliot Hospital Clinical Laboratory Services Agreement for the period beginning January first, twenty twenty-four, for a term of one year and automatic renewals for successive one-year terms, and authorize the chair to sign all necessary documents, X, recommended by the Senior Director of Long-Term Care Services.
Second.
Second, any discussion?
Had a lot of iterations and a lot of, lot of, you know, good work by everybody. I think one thing that, you know, obviously, Commissioner Gaddu, you're concerned about the indemnification portions and the omission, removing indemnification altogether satisfies those issues. So onward and upward.
They did a good job.
Yeah.
On motion, Commissioner Foyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Gaddu?
Yes.
I vote yes. All right, the partner had updates. I'm gonna start with Jude since we, we began some of it.
Good morning. I gave you my briefing. You have a really good notion. We're getting ready for our first storm of the season. Pretty exciting. Couple of folks on the SoC that haven't plowed for us before. So, do you think? Yeah, me too.
I know.
A little one would be good for the first one, yeah.
Fine, exciting.
Right?
Yeah, exciting.
It's the first one.
It is, it is.
So other than that, all's well. We're very busy. We're digging today, actually, at that steam main of the jail, so we'll be checking on that when I get out.
Okay.
Thank you.
Chuck Maggici?
As usual, payroll was obviously a little bit more condensed with Monday being the holiday. But again, this is the reason why same years ago, we moved the biweekly payday from Thursday to Friday. So all individuals involved with payroll, whether departmental payroll or editors or whatever, could actually enjoy having the Monday holidays off, where before we all had to work on Monday holidays, on payroll weeks, sometimes have to come in on the Sunday. Because direct deposit deadline was always Wednesday, actually Tuesday night. So this works out a lot better, so. Yes.
Such a simple solution for, like, that has a major impact on your team, so.
And has impact on, for those hourly individuals involved in payroll, has impact on overtime dollars and sometimes holiday premium dollars and things like that. So it saved the county money as, as well as far as, you know, being like a route booster. Because I know that even for myself and, and payroll people who have been around for a while, you know, we have two hundred plus holiday hours because of having to work on those holidays before. So grants, obviously, busy. We did get a, Emily Tomasi got a slight update from DHHS on the pilot program grant. It seemed like they're trying to move fast track as far as getting final language?
Wow.
So there might be something coming out that might be, you know, a file version of the agreement, and the the state's moved to doing DocuSign for e-signing agreements. And then what would happen is DHHS would e-sign it as well. And then it gets on the Doc for GNC, for Governor and Council, for a future meeting. And that might take one or two future meetings for that to get there. But they're supposedly, they're working on finalizing the language and looking forward to get like electronic version to be signed.
Nothing moves quick in government.
Yeah, sometimes it is like a little bit of a hurry up and wait. Obviously, work continues on the UKG transition to pro amendments. I know that Ben started meeting with some departments, with sheriffs, and I think he's gonna be going back there as well, I believe. But trying to get things set with that. We're still trying to get things straightened out with the retirement system on posting of prior batches, monthly batches. They finally did their corrections on the system so we could post October's batch. So, yeah, things haven't gone well with that transition on their side. So
It's been really challenging.
Yeah, so it makes it interesting that we're trying to straighten out things on the UKG creation of the nurse file, while nurse also isn't having their own new system in order. So it's, it's making it a little challenging. We're not really getting anywhere near prompt responses from the retirement system on things. You might get trips and traps of, of answers, but it's not everything we're asking for answers on to take care of things. But overall, as usual, just busy.
I'm good.
Thank you.
Allison?
Hi. So, yeah, but we finally think we might have a storm coming up. So between Jude, Jason, and I, we'll monitor things related to any potential weather emergencies that might come over the weekend or next week if there's another little bit of storm. We had Eileen Villanova is gonna be the new Human Resource Assistant. She starts on Monday. Jessica Janren returned to the temp clerical position. She started this week. She'll be providing cross-training for the next two months to Eileen to get her up and running. Miley Osborne has been on board with us for about two weeks. That's actually a resource between Jason's office and mine, and focusing on the travelers and getting them onboarding. So she is acclimating very well to that. We are gonna, our hope is to go live on the fourteenth, but I know that there's some runways. We have not actually had a test payroll run. So Ben, Julie, and I will be talking maybe today about maybe pushing that back. I'm not comfortable going forward without, until we have a full payroll test in our testing system. So, and I know this, I know the payroll group is very heightened about that as well, and I'm more of a, I'd rather be safe than sorry, and make sure that we can try to mitigate any kind of funky things that may go on, and I think you're of the same opinion. So I think we'll talk about that after, but it may be a pause for another two weeks or something. I don't know, but I know that Ben followed it this morning, so.
Yeah, I think the trains would continue regardless.
Yeah.
Obviously, and again, the front-end users will see the least change as far as if they're just mostly punching again on the app, sorry, it's your, on the apps, they'll see more features, but it's those of us on the back end that have to deal with the complexities and things that working really exactly
We need a payroll group and the HRP that is pushing information over. Any of them should settle that the information is accurate and that there's no bugs or fluky things that are going on. And because we haven't run a live payroll and test, I know, I'm not comfortable, and I know I'm hearing the same on the other side, and I know you aren't either. So that, we'll talk about that after, but they may push back. We want it right. We want everybody to be happy with it, but we also don't wanna cause a lot of commotion behind the scenes if things don't go as well as we expect without having to run a test. Thank you.
Anything, oh, Allison?
Yes, thank you.
All right, I'm going to go, I'm gonna go to Jason Smith.
Good morning, Commissioners. Just to update you, this week, we've had, as of this morning, thirteen staff members test positive for COVID since Saturday, affecting several departments within the nursing home. Family member also came in and their loved one now test positive for COVID as well. So we have seen an influx of people with flu and COVID and norovirus and just, you know, the call-out forms over the weekend, we received thirty, just a lot of individuals sick. In addition to that, good news is no cases have been reported in the assisted living community. Our annual recertification inspection survey window has opened for assisted living, so we expect the state to arrive at any point for that. Some renovation updates. The kitchen painting project has been completed. Everything looks really nice there now. The hospice suites continue to be on schedule, and so we're looking forward to the end of February for the opening of those new units, suites. And then we're starting to work on the assisted living dining room project in the next few months, so we're looking forward to working on that with the residents. The Water Tower Cafe is now open and fully functioning again. Thank you for your patience with that. Also, just to let you know, the Water Tower Cafe catering manager, Jacob Marsh, has resigned, so they're in the search for, looking for a new replacement for him. Our new provider will be starting this Friday, so we're looking forward to adding another provider to replace Doctor Weeks. So we're excited about that. In addition to that, Kendra Mayall, General Manager of Assisted Living, myself, will be attending a three-day conference in Woodstock, Vermont, the New England Alliance, in conjunction with the American College of Healthcare Administrators for our annual update. for our annual update meeting, so we're looking forward to attending that. Um, in addition to that, uh, just been really busy, um, we don't have infection preventionists that should retire, so we're recruiting for that. Um, Michelle and the clinical team and myself, we're all pitching in and supporting each other. Um, and then in addition to that, um, our QA quality risk, uh, manager, uh, tasks have been, um, kind of divvied up between myself and, um, our assisted living administrator. So we're kind of all working together as a team here. Thank you.
Um, Kathy Stacy?
Morning. Hey, good morning, everybody. Uh, nothing new to report. We've been a little bit slow. We did have a very large transaction last week, eleven million dollar transaction that took place in London, Derry. Uh, the fact, um, which, you know, plug along. Thank you. Happy New Year, everybody.
Kathy, Pat Conway? Morning.
Good morning, everyone. Um, things are going well here. We're super busy as usual. We've, um, had a, a big sentencing hearing on a negligent homicide case, one of my cases on Monday. Um, or Tuesday, which was obviously January second. That went pretty well and, um, we have, geez, one, two, three, four, six jury trials scheduled the next few weeks here at the Superior Court. We also started, um, the new process with the new changes in the law. So the felonies are, are being filed first in circuit court rather here, rather than here in, in Superior Court. So that started this week. Um, and we're just kind of closely looking at that to see how things shake out and how it affects our office. Um, but other than that, that's, that's pretty much it.
Okay, thanks, Pat. Uh, Sheriff's Department, Sheriff Seas. And Catherine Man.
Good morning. Uh, nothing really new to report, just, uh, plug your arm, starting to work on our budget. It's all set to go and that's about it. Happy New Year.
Hey, thank you. And Jason Henry, uh, superintendent.
Good morning, everybody. Uh, currently today, we have a hundred and forty in-house, so we're climbing back up. Like I said, after the holidays is what usually happens. Um, we have three staff members, uh, positive COVID. Uh, several inmates between a couple of different units, so we're shut down for at least ten days to try to get it out of here. Um, as I said last time, our A and B unit is all been done, showers, everything. We moved the inmates back over, so we have the our, um, suicide prevention cells back open again, which is awesome. Um, Officer Evans was sent on to C block to start, uh, to repaint that and then D block as well anticipation of, um, as our numbers go up this year. Um, and thank you, Jude, for the work on the showers. It is, uh, yeah, more than we thought, uh, what's going on inside of there. Our new vehicle, uh, is back now, the one from the vehicle that had, um, that we lost this, uh, last year, so we have that back in the fleet. We've added a camera to it, um, for transports. So automatically come on and record when we have inmates in the back. We're just writing a policy, which helps save, um, us from having to put two officers in when we transport a female around. We can do with one officer because we now will record everything. So that's help us out. Um, and I like to say the, look, um, Dave Costantino and, um, Jimmy Warden have been working on the Apex Simulator Training, uh, anticipation, getting ready for the, um, demonstration next week at the Commissioners' meeting. So they're getting that. They did a couple of days this week to do next week and they'll be good to go for the demonstration on the eleventh.
Did we do a, um, use of the room request?
No, because it's in, in-house. It's not, it's not a outside group. This is.
We're, we're not. Or.
Usually you reserve the room.
So there's no requirement under the new policy?
Right.
And maybe based on that, it's like, I did earlier conversation with Leila, but I, I, Jason, you all set? Okay, thank you. Uh, I'm gonna go to Leila next.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Yeah, I have nothing.
Okay. Alright, um, so on that note that Commissioner Coyle just touched on, there may be some confusion and, and I don't know, this is for discussion, Commissioners, um, there are, there've been a lot of requests that are coming to Leila for the room, um, and.
From whom?
Different people in, inside the, inside the county. So we don't need to do that. It's just reserving the room.
Uh, that doesn't seem like Leila's job.
It's not, and that's just why I'm bringing it up. So if it's internal and you're using the Hilton, that's not, that doesn't have to be filled up. Form doesn't have to be filled out on that. That's internal. Uh, it's just gonna be notification, uh, that, that someone's using that room. Um, and, and as it was prior to that, any, any organization outside of the county has to use that. So I just want some clarification on, you know, to make sure that that's, that everybody understands that. Um, and as Commissioner Goddard mentioned, it's not, it's not really Leila's responsibility to set up tables and stuff.
Whose responsibility is it? I think it's somebody within the, the nursing home that's been handling it.
We'll, we'll put it in the newsletter to clarify, uh, but, um, Karen DeWitt, that are the, um, environmental services. She's charged with the room. Um, you know, I call over, anybody can show up for scheduling. And then they will ask, typically they will ask, what is the room setup? Or they can tell Karen what the room setup is because engineer, excuse me, environmental services is the crew that would set up for the room as how they want it. So shape, auditorium type shape, all, all of that. So going forward, department heads, if they wanna use the room, they should just call to Karen directly to coordinate. Nope, Jason's shaking his head.
No, no. That, that process, that process has changed ever since this has gone through.
Right.
So when Leila, when Leila receives the documentation to request a room, that email is forwarded to, uh, Jane at the main reception desk and myself and to Elaine. That process from there gets communicated to the appropriate department that needs to set up the room or implement technology needs. So from there, we coordinate. We, we have one person coordinating everything now, moving forward. So when, uh, when Leila gets the request, she approves it through your process and then once it's approved, we get notified and we reserve and hold the room.
Well, wait a minute, that's, you're talking about, you're talking about Jason Henry wanting to use the Hilton?
Yes, and so Jane, Jane's the person. We reach out to main reception desk.
That means Jason Henry doesn't go to Leila to request that room. It's.
No.
Okay, so I just want.
Jane is the coordinator of the room.
Right, yeah.
Anybody outside of the county, then that process, who just mentioned.
Correct. My, my point is Jane is coordinating everything at this point, moving forward internally for the room.
Okay, so.
You want the room?
Department.
Call Jane.
Okay, I think we're all, change the meeting. So, uh, let's move on to, uh, any new business or old business to discuss?
No, just a, a quick request. I know that, um, there's an off-cycle AP warrant. It says for fifteen dollars, but, um, that way we can get the new individual that's helping out with the, um, bus transport. Um, have the proper DMV, uh, credentials and, yeah.
Okay.
Um, so that.
Leila was already on that, so it's on.
Well, I was, I was out on Friday and the warrant wasn't shown to me until yesterday. It's like, well, I wish I had seen it for Monday, but.
I'm, we'll make the motion. I think, I move to approve an off-cycle accounts payable warrant dated December twenty ninth, twenty twenty three for fifteen dollars.
This has been made a seconded, uh, on the motion, Commissioner Goddard?
Yes.
Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
I vote yes.
Thank you.
Um, okay, any other new business? Well, we have long-term care, uh, we have a strategic planning service presentation. But is there anything before, is there anything in addition to that? No, okay, alright, Jason, uh, you, are you gonna make the presentation?
Do we want to?
We'll be down momentarily.
Do you wanna go, I would suggest that we move to public comment first because we have a couple of people from the public here and then, um, so table this and put that at the end for those.
Without objection, we'll do that. So I'm gonna ask if the public, uh, any members of the public wishes to speak now at the time we do that. Um, I do see two people that I don't recognize. If you're, you can either, uh, take yourself off of you, if you've got anything you'd like to discuss, this is your opportunity to do so.
I suspect that they're here with Jason's presentation.
Maybe, yeah. Okay. So, alright, so we're gonna, we're just gonna take a, uh, a quick minute break while we're waiting for Jason to come on down.
No, right, nothing I'm aware of. So this is the last one? No, no. Happy New Year.
Alright, so we're gonna take a little minute break.
Yeah.
Anyone want to talk?
Yeah.
Do you think we're able to just stay after the board meeting next week so that we could, um, just, and if Pat can meet to come?
So. Good morning. Um, both of us will be, I'm just gonna leave the beginning and then hand it over to, uh, Jessica. Um, so Jason Smith, um, back in August of two thousand twenty-three, uh, we came to the board to present the idea of implementing a strategic plan and looking for, um, a strategic partner to help us with that, uh, to nearly do a feasibility study for the county to look at what is best for Rockingham County as we enter, um, the future. And according to New Hampshire State Plan of Aging, by the year of twenty thirty, more than one-third of the New Hampshire population will be over the age of sixty-five. Um, and really this started during the budget season with delegation asking what is the plan for the future of long-term care? And so that's really why we came to you. And so to fast forward, uh, this presentation today is to really look at where we have been since August and looking at the progress that, uh, the strategic plan, um, team has put together. So, uh, Jessica is so crafty with, um, PowerPoint. And so we figured it would be nice to just kinda show you all the progress that the committee has made thus so far and, uh, just kind of bring you up to speed. Um, so Jessica, thank you.
Yeah, so we obviously know that this is a big investment and, um, something that with the strategic plan, this will be something that we'll lean on for many years to come. And so we wanted to provide an overview of how, of the selection process and the review process to show you, um, the way, the ways that we scored the vendors that submitted proposals. And then also just to remind you about what our desired outcomes are and a little bit of the background, um, as far as what we're seeing in the state of New Hampshire for some of the trends that are out there. So as Jason just said, we keep seeing this statistic that obviously the state is aging and there is going to be a huge influx of individuals in the state. We're going to be needing our services in the next several decades. So these are some of the trends that we have seen and these are the categories that, um, we have identified as some of the most pressing issues. There are others out there, of course, but these are the ones that we keep seeing again and again. So senior housing, I actually read this morning that according to the twenty twenty-three New Hampshire statewide housing needs assessment, New Hampshire will need ninety thousand new units in the next twenty years to accommodate the wave of older adults who are going to be needing more senior-friendly housing. Affordability is a huge issue, um, for for-profit senior living communities. The cost of the monthly rates can really lead to financial ruin for families. Um, half of assisted livings in the United States cost over fifty-four thousand dollars a year. So if you just think about that, the average person trying to pay, pay that for their, for their loved one, that's out of, out of the reach for your typical person who doesn't have millions of dollars in saving. Memory care is a huge issue. Right now, five to seven million individuals have Alzheimer's or dementia and that's expected to grow to twelve million individuals by twenty forty.
And our waitlist for memory care is like so long here. I mean, it's, there's, and the number of Medicaid beds in private facilities is totally tapped. I mean, it's a huge issue.
Yeah, most, a lot of memory care communities typically have waitlists. And again, they're, they're charging sometimes ten, eleven thousand dollars a month for, for memory care, um, which do- doesn't usually last families for very long either. And then once they run out of money, where do they go?
There's no.
Yeah, um, right. And then, um, hospice is another, there's a shortage of hospice houses and hospice beds in the state, which means that many individuals who are, um, at the end-of-life journey are receiving hospice care in their homes or in a hospital setting, which might not be appropriate for, for their needs. Whoops. So Jason covered this a little bit, um, as well, but we just wanted to remind you about the, the process that we have gone through thus far, which started with the delegation request. For us to explore these opportunities, we drafted a initial proposal, which was approved by the board. We then developed the RFP itself with, um, specific guidelines. We also added in the childcare feasibility addendum that was requested. We then conducted outreach to find vendors. So in addition to uploading the RFP to the county website, we also were able to identify strategic planning firms that are, um, that had senior living experience through the leading age network. And then we finally began to acquire the proposals. So we did require all vendors to set up a meeting prior to submitting a bid so that they could really understand our mission and the guidelines and exactly what we were looking for to help us, um, really make sure we were comparing kind of apples to apples when the, uh, when the proposals came through. So this is a reminder of what was in the proposal document that, um, was approved by the board with our desired outcomes, goals and the approach that we wanted to take. So really the goal or the, one of the desires of this, of having a strategic plan is so that we can prepare for these changing demographics in New Hampshire and enhance our operations to support different care environments that will appeal to the next generation of older adults. And then in doing that, we will hopefully become a senior living community of choice in New Hampshire, be able to expand our community-based services, have a local option for hospice care, offer more memory care services and potentially explore affordable senior housing.
This is private pay. There's an opportunity. I mean, I know we're not revenue-driven, but we, this, there's so many gaps in this area that you have, there is an opportunity. You can compete with the private sector.
Right.
Just by virtue of availability.
And I think, you know, when we look at this down the road, it is looking at the financial aspect and the case mix that would help support the, the, the opportunity to pay for itself by having a, a proper case mix of private and Medicaid individuals.
And is there any opportunity as we were looking at that grant funding to apply some of that grant money towards some of our efforts here?
It depends.
Well, I mean, it's, it's, it's a pilot program. It's a one-year thing. There's no guarantee that state's gonna.
But if we, I know.
But is now, is that, on that pilot program, is it not focused on keeping people in their home?
Yes, it is. Now, gold town facility.
We can apply some of that money with this because it's almost really kinda conflicting.
Cause the state's trying to reduce their amount of.
Right.
Of exposure to Medicaid.
And we still don't even know what the grants, uh, dollar, and that is. And so we, we still don't know. And, and I do know that, um, there may be conversations down the road that we could, depending on the amount, and if they extend the grant, we could probably try to propose something again down the road to them, uh, to the state.
But, uh, you know, as we talk, maybe the bridge is somewhere in the realm of senior liv- I don't know, like some sort of senior living with, like.
So what should be able to help us out is that the state's doing more focus and starting this current fiscal year as far as increasing. as far as increasing the rates for home and community-based care. And granted, you know, the assisted living counts towards that as far as residential care. So that should help out all those types of providers. Hopefully some of that can also extend to some of the memory care services and things like that.
Exactly. And, and assisted, we had an assisted living that was dedicated to memory care. There's a different weight structure from that as well.
Yep.
Well, that, there's, there's the bridge.
All right, Jessica.
So that, um, you know, looking for opportunities, like Commissioner Coyle just said, that will be part of the first phase of this project where, um, the strategic planning vendor will conduct an in-depth SWOT analysis where they will identify our strengths, our weaknesses, opportunities, and threats. And that will help us really gain an understanding of where we are in this market. The vendor will also then conduct market research and engage with internal and external stakeholders through surveys, focus groups, working sessions. And then they will implement and execute the strategic plan and give us detailed steps necessary to achieve our goals. These are the vendors that we identified through, um, the Leading Age Network as well as those that found the RFP through the public purchase website. So fifteen vendors were engaged. Out of those vendors, four submitted proposals following that mandatory discovery meeting. Two vendors sent refusal me- refusal emails after having an initial discovery meeting, and then nine were non-responsive to the RFP.
So that's a good, uh, good mix of people that responded, the vendors, um. So I like to see that.
So once we had those four proposals, we really sat down to consider how we wanted to go about selecting our chosen vendor. And these are the four criteria that we determined were the most important for us. So first, their depth of strategic planning experience as well as the methodology they were going to take, to take and their approach. Mission alignment, it was really important for us that the vendor had a specialization in senior care and that the background of the principal members that they had experience in the healthcare setting, long-term care, um, and also experience with nonprofits or government organizations. Market presence. For us, we felt that having a familiarity with New Hampshire senior care and housing needs would be very important for the vendor to have. And then their project portfolio, we wanted to look at past projects that the vendor had completed of a similar scope. So after we determined those four pieces of criteria, we created a scoring matrix. The scoring matrix was out of a maximum score of a hundred and ten. So we identified different um, employees and in different departments here to review all of the proposals and score the vendors using this matrix. So this shows the total score that each individual rated of each vendor. We do have a copy of the, um, a, a more detailed copy of each individual scoring based on the different criteria, um, which I believe Elaine sent to Leila, so you should have that. But you can see the average scores on the bottom. So, um, this next slide just shows that data in a graph. So Barry, the vendor Barry Dunn was rated the highest with an average score of ninety-eight, followed by the vendor Baker Tilly with an average score of seventy-five. Give Us had an average rating of fifty-two, and Health Dimensions Group had an average rating of forty-two. This is a side-by-side comparison of the vendors. So I'm gonna just walk you through this a little bit. I know it looks like there's a lot on this slide, so.
We'll keep it high.
Yes. So most importantly, the, the, the cost of the project, we have those right here.
It was like Barry Dunn is like, is works out well, one, they're local, two, they're like a kind of mid-range of the competitive market and, um, they have nonprofits as well as the timeline seems consistent with that.
Yes.
They have a, a presence in New Hampshire, working with long-term care communities and government entities.
And they know, they know New Hampshire, which is, I, I think if anything from some of the studies I've seen where we even like the salary studies, I think having New Hampshire-specific experience, because it's sort of unique, is important, so.
Exactly, and that's what we identified as well. So the the vendor that did have the lowest cost was Health Dimensions Group. I just have it abbreviated to H D G up there. But there, you can see there is an asterix next to the ninety-five thousand six hundred and seventy, and that's because that, their proposal actually didn't include the entire scope of work. Um, the proposal didn't include the fees for the market research and the focus groups and the studies and surveys, which we felt was a huge component of this. So, you know, going back to this graph, even though Health Dimensions Group had the lowest cost, they actually scored the lowest on the matrix, whereas Barry Dunn has the most next competitive rate, and they scored the highest. All right, that's just a little. Are there any questions on, on this analysis? Okay.
Uh, just go back one.
Yeah.
If you don't mind, I just wanna look at the timeline again.
Sure.
Nine months for Barry Dunn, the other two that were, it was ranged from eight to twelve, Barry Dunn was nine.
All right, thank you. And, and, um, Leila will be forwarding you this, but it will have more description and information um, to really help define if there's further questions on how we came up with this conclusion.
It seems yeah, like a good team.
Um, so the scoring committee, after all of that, our, the scoring committee's recommendation is to engage the vendor Barry Dunn. So going back to that set of criteria we were looking at, they did have a very high-quality response to the RFP. Um, they're the, uh, and strategic planning is really a core service that the firm offers, so they have a great depth of experience. Mission alignment, they are a recognized leader in serving nonprofit organizations. Right now, they currently serve more than a hundred healthcare nonprofit organizations, and they're also active participants in, um, industry associations. You know, I see them at conferences for the New Hampshire Healthcare Association, um, they're members of Leading Age, they're, uh, and they have that New Hampshire presence. Um, even though, so they are a main-based firm with the location in Manchester, but they also have locations throughout the country. And so I think that it's nice that even though they have that New Hampshire base, they also can give us a national perspective as well, and let's look at those trends.
I have a question about them. You said that they're engaged with a hundred different communities. Uh, what are they doing for those communities? We're, we're hiring them for, potentially for an analysis and long-term planning, but what, what's their core business that they're doing on an ongoing basis?
So they, they do an array, they're consultants, but they have, uh, several, four business lines. One is accounting, um, one is IT and strategic planning. The other one is healthcare and strategic planning. Um, I do know that, um, uh, they have also, uh, with their arm, a financial analysis as well, um, such as, um, in their, um, uh, their portfolio, River Woods has used them to help with their expansion of their community. Uh, the VA community has also, the nursing home VA has also used them to assist with market research, to help with their demographics on how to attract more people. So they are full-service, th- this is just one niche of what they do, but they do an array of different things overall. Um, and, um, yeah, they, so they are also advocacies, they have, um, they, um, have a, a legal team that can represent, um, uh, the New Hampshire Healthcare Association engages with them. Um, so they have an array of different services that they offer.
And in the proposals that they sent over to us, they did give us, um, quite a few different communities and associations that they worked with, uh, completing projects very similar to what we were looking for, so you'll see that in the proposals as well. And then lastly, they did have the most competitive agreement with a fixed price to conduct both of the studies, the childcare study and the strategic planning study. Um, they are also one of the only vendors that came on-site and actually did a tour of the building with us and met with us in person. Um, and we felt that, that they offered the best value, um, for the strategic plan.
So that will, in the next couple of weeks, um, Leila will be forwarding a, basically a package uh, of several documents with the RFP and, uh, a memo from myself, um, representing the recommendation for all of your consideration to move forward with that. In addition to that is the childcare study, which I'll be working with Allison on. Um, and then we will be looking at, um, that as well, um, and, and moving forward and really kind of digging further into that. So we'll probably be back presenting the childcare study with you as well. Um, and, and so we have funds available for that section for long-term care strategic planning. And so looking at the funding mechanism will have to be something that we'll consider, um, in the next few, when we come back to present again.
And Barry Dunn also has the most expensive option for the, um, childcare study as well.
Yeah, so did you say that, uh, we, we, the childcare study, is that on a, like a separate module?
We asked them to do it separate.
Okay, so I see twenty-seven thousand four hundred and thirty-nine dollars, right?
Mm-hmm.
So when they're, when they're forming this price, is that, is that separate?
Yeah.
It's separated.
That's a whole separate.
Okay.
We asked for an amendment.
Okay, all right, I'm just checking whether that was all inclusive of the number or.
No, it's in addition to.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, all right, um, and then, um, in the study, are we looking at how, uh, the, the fact that we have the shortage of nurses and how we're going to? I, I like this, this because I'll tell you, from a standpoint of where I was in Derry, being on planning board, we have what we call a master plan.
Mm-hmm.
This is similar to a master.
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
And when you do a master plan, it's really kind of a roadmap list of how you gotta do things. And it's really, it's a really good tool. Uh, so I like that.
Um, but the end results after the strategic plan is to really develop a master plan and the roadmap on where do we see the future going.
Okay.
And what, what's, what, when we were considering this whole process is we really want to get to the grassroots.
Yeah.
And really understand right what's happening here, right in front, what's happening in the surrounding community in Rockingham County and statewide.
Mm-hmm.
So there's going to be stakeholders that will be asked to be part of read, you know, the, the, the survey process, the focus group. And there will be community members that will be asked about that. And then there'll be the state, and then there'll be national research data that will help. And, and that was the biggest thing is that I want to ensure to the, the taxpayers that we were having, um, national research data to support what the local individual is saying and what we see in the industry.
Mm-hmm.
So, uh, you know, I support what we do here, but I wanna make sure that it's backed up.
Yeah, and so going, just going back to where I'm looking at, and, I mean, I, I'd like to see a big part of that focus on how we're gonna get nurses and I, I understand the reasons why we don't, but is that part of this study as to how we're?
So I think what will come from this is that due to the fact that there is a staffing shortage, what other environments of care can we support without using the higher level of care such as nursing homes? Can we use assisted living where it's a different staff mechanism where we don't have to have a high regulatory? Can we use senior housing where we can have home care services come in from outside and set up the traditional nursing?
The plan does include, um, like staffing models, so it would show us, you know, if we were to have this many more units at this service line, this is how much, how, how many staff members we would need in order to.
Okay, so, so does it, it does not have that?
No, I think, it's not, I think Jason and I, Jason and I have talked about like what the landscape, future landscape might look uh, for staffing. It may not look like it is today based on this, because we're looking futuristic in what that would entail. But so I think it opens it up, but I don't, the purpose of this, I don't believe was for staffing, it was more for.
Staff is a variable.
Right.
It's a variable to the research, but it's not based, this is not based on staffing.
The whole is like needs of the community, uh, our community at large, and then how, how best we can meet those needs, understanding what the, you know, thirty year lookout is. I'm not sure, what's the, what's the projections on time for how, what's the lookout?
It, it's.
They did twenty years.
Twenty, okay, yeah, so whatever, so then.
That's fine, I'm just, and I'm just using my pen, it's my own, it has nothing to do with anybody else, okay? This is a problem of we, as we know, staffing is a problem we have now. So I like to try to find a solution for before I even look at childcare, spending thirty, close to thirty thousand dollars on childcare. That's my concern. We're, we're looking at other problems before we're looking at the problem that we have.
But I do, I know as far as the childcare thing, that's a separate track, and I, Jason just sent me a little stuff on that. I won't be able to get to that for another two weeks, certainly we still don't look at it. So I think more of this was more, this is more of the importance to the childcare and staff.
And we can move forward with Barry Dunn without doing the childcare.
Yeah, yeah, you answered my question wrong again, that it's a separate module, we separated it, which is fine.
So through the strategic planning process, we may identify, uh, that senior living is an option, hospice house is an option, assisted living focusing on memory care is an option. But then it's the board's decision from master planning on where's the focus.
Yeah.
And so since staffing is an issue, maybe the focus should be on senior housing where it doesn't require a ton of respect. And then when things potentially may change in the near future, in five years, hopefully, maybe it's assisted living that's next, or maybe it's hospice. So I think, you know, it will depend on what the board's decision is on.
Yeah, fair enough, thank you. Hello, is there any other questions at all, anybody?
What is also nice is that because Barry Dunn has a diverse background with fin- financials and accounting, that they're able to support, um, really, uh, the whole, you know, the financial component of the cost analysis to it and then revenue stream and how it would offset.
That's nice. Now, I did notice two people that were on Zoom, are those people part of the company that you're?
I, I don't know who's on.
Recommending, okay. I, I just didn't know because they wanted to try and.
No, we, we did not invite them to, this was just an information purpose meeting, just to let you all know where we have been working uh, on this and that's not going.
Yes. It's a good job. I'm really, uh, happy to see that. Thank you guys, you did a good job.
Thank, thank you. Well, um, yeah, like Jason said, we will, um, be sending over a packet for you, well, towards you in the next um, few weeks before, uh, Jason makes the.
You should already have those stuck in the edition from coming back.
Okay, so the commissioners have, they already have that.
Oh, they do, okay, all right. And then you'll be coming back on the G two.
Thank you, guys, appreciate it.
Perfect, thank you.
Yeah, all right, thank you.
Have a good day.
Nice to see you all, have a good one.
All right, so you're not, not public, right? So.
What's that? I move to adjourn.
Although famous AI.
Hi.